Great, welcome, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Just so you guys are all aware, Molly is out of town and her backup Mary has tested positive for COVID, so we will not have a clerk here tonight. Tom may or may not have been exposed to Mary, so Tom will not be here tonight. So I'd appreciate all your help in keeping the meeting moving along. And we'll do the minutes from the recording. That's how the minutes. Any questions about that?
No, just a reminder that Tom asked that we state our name when we vote.
Oh.
Valdi, yes.
I did not see that, so thank you for the reminder. Okay, roll call. Henry.
Present.
Barron.
Here.
Valdi.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Grimmer.
Here.
Kason.
Here.
Iker.
Here.
Clerk is absent and Tom Hafner is absent. Okay, roll call is complete. Special Law of Business Presentation by Delafield Chamber of Commerce Regarding the 2022 Chamber Events. Discussion and Questions Regarding the Chamber of Commerce Presentation. Welcome, ladies.
Hey.
Just remind you, name and address. I get to do the clerk thing, too.
Megan Bratz, 2216 Patrick Lane, Waukesha, Wisconsin. Peggy Olson, 154 Pike Street, Akonwak.
So we have submitted to the city the 2022 event calendar. We did do preliminary event packets to Molly last week. We are not doing any maps or anything at this time because we do anticipate with the construction that the events in themselves will look different this year, meaning depending on where they are in construction, some things might shift what streets we use and things like that. So we will submit within 60 days of the event if we plan to have road closures and things. At this time, we went with all the 2021-as-is event packets for 2022. We do have a new site plan for the block party, to which we will bring to our board on Thursday. There's just a lot of conversation on the potential, like, financial losses of hosting the block party, shifting it, switching locations and things. But other than that, at this point, we plan to just roll with the events as they have. There's no new events on the calendar. The only event that we discarded, the Fall Art Walk, so there'll only be one art walk now. The Spring Art Walk will fall on a Saturday morning, coincide with the farmer's market versus a Friday night in Delafield. And then the Wine Walk and Brew Fest was always the first Saturday in October. We've moved that up into September with getting rid of the Fall Art Walk in hopes of good weather, better weather chances.
Gotcha.
Did you say you're looking for a new location for the block party?
It's possible. We have met with Hendrix, we've met with Kent, we've met with our board. There's a lot of fear about changing the location as a whole and what you do with that. We did have conversations about just maybe not doing a block party this year. There's a lot of expenses that go into it, so we really don't know. We're working with Hendrix to see kind of where that will all fall and how. Right now, the site plan is to move the restaurants into the middle section, the section where the band and beer is would stay as-is, and then the VIP and overflow would go into Liberty Park and we would use access of the bridge. The restaurants and things would use the back entrance then. The biggest thing with moving the restaurants is they kind of park on Main and drop off, and they won't have that access anymore. And they also can't access Dopkins because when you turn off Main on Dopkins, that small section will be closed. So we're trying to find the best scenario to get the restaurants essentially taken care of because even though the revenue comes on the beer and things, the restaurant on a chamber mission, that's the bread and butter of it. So we're trying to figure out what's going to work best for them and then make everything else kind of work.
So you're not looking at alternate sites, you're looking at alternate setup within the same site?
It's just alternate setup. Well, so if that doesn't work, the alternative plan, the thought was the complex between the Fish Hatchery and, what is that, Cushing Park there, that we've talked about that site. The problem with moving from there is we have electrical panels in the municipal parking lot that we utilize, and generators are extremely expensive. So we would need to rent generators all the way around for everything for that event, and you're talking over $40,000 in generators. So then it creates the issue of, is the revenue, we're already going to have a down in most of our events because getting around in Delafield in general can be difficult. So I think when the construction comes, we're already going to face that. And then to take on an overhaul like that, to shift the event somewhere else, doesn't really seem feasible. So I think if this site plan doesn't get approved, I'm not really sure, to be honest, where we'll go from there.
Any thought of closing Main Street? I'm just throwing it out there to...
Like, buy the municipal lot?
I just don't know, because you want more hard surface.
Right, I would think from Genesee.
I'd sooner close in front of Revers than that.
Well, I just, I'm thinking from the triangle.
Our biggest issue of closing any street or moving, shifting even, like, we talked about even where, like, the porta potties go on Dopkins, we talked about shifting that way, is losing those two large electrical panels in the municipal parking lot that's already been paid for. So we would need two large generators in lieu of those two panels. So we have Pauls involved in on this. One of our board directors has a pull at Sunbelt, so we really are, like, pulling in all favors, but we just, we honestly, at this point, don't know. Like, Hendrix said they were going to start fencing next week, now that's pushed to January. So I really, until they truly, like, get working, I feel like we're not going to really know where they're at at that point until then, so. So fun, I know. Yeah.
Well, thanks for working with them, thanks for working with the city. You know, it's all going to be worth it in the end, and we're going to have, you know, 12 months, you know, or a little bit more of, you know, traffic and trying to help one another, figure out how to get things done.
And these states, these are very important to downtown. They really are.
Right. We would like to think that Hendrix finds them important to the people who want to open businesses in their buildings as well, so.
Did you, do we have something for our newsletter to publishing these dates?
Yes, so this whole calendar will go out in the communicator.
Good, okay.
Okay. Yeah, I put them on my calendar.
Great. Any other questions?
And I think, like, we'll probably, once we have a solid block party plan, come back and bring that to Molly and Kent for sure. And then if anyone has questions, we know it's just going to be a year of almost COVID, but a little different. A different ballgame.
Way more fun, though.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we will move on to number five, Approval of Minutes of November 15th, 2021.
Valdi moved to approve.
Grimmer, second.
Nicely done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, City of Delafield Citizens' Comments. You're on the agenda, so I know you don't have any citizens' comments, so I will say citizens' comments are now closed. Okay, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, 7A, Approval of the Nominated City of Delafield Election Inspector Poll Workers for the 2022-2023 Term.
Iker moves to approve.
Jim Barron, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to number eight, Board Committees and Commission Reports. Nothing for licenses, A, B, Planning Commission, Mr. Iker.
All right. You can look for the minutes for our last meeting, but we've got two pieces of information in the packet today that need action, and they are both, let me pull them up here.
One is further down, I think.
Okay, we've got... First one is, this was in front of us before, I think we made a recommendation, the council made a recommendation to the Plan Commission to visit their tree in lieu of whatever, tree compensation for if a developer doesn't have places on their property, it chooses not to replace trees that are taken down during construction. And the cost was $150, and we recommended to the Plan Commission to go to $250. I think that came from Park and Rec or the Tree Board. And so the Plan Commission thought that was a great idea and put forth the amended ordinance in the packet.
I think it's great that you added the condition that the commission will take into consideration stock prices of the nursery, stock prices at the time, so that was insightful. Was there anything else to change besides in this, besides the price per caliper inch?
I don't believe so. The, nothing as far as any loopholes around it or anything like that. If there's any other changes, it's strictly housecleaning, text, or punctuation type stuff, so. I will make a motion, then, this is Tim, to accept the tree preservation in lieu of tree replacement changes as listed in Section 52-625I1.
Grimmer, roll, second.
All righty, is there any discussion?
Out of curiosity, is there? It's related to this, and I'm not sure if this would be the right section for it. So maybe it's even another conversation. But as far as protecting trees of historical significance, this just would permit somebody to cut down trees if they needed to, and then they would just pay the $250 per caliper inch. Is there other restrictions? It's probably another section.
I shouldn't have.
Nope. When you're talking about trees of historic significance, that would be, like, the one that comes to mind is the big oak tree by the Chick-fil-A. Those are typically brought up at the time of the site plans in those situations. So there's nothing, we don't have, I don't know that there's a master list or anything that's typically a reaction to somebody proposing to take something down.
Okay.
Well, that's reassuring that that tree was spared.
That tree has a special, like...
Yeah.
Yeah. We had good discussions when the Chick-fil-A came in.
And there's a citizen in our community who is helping finance the care of that tree out of their own personal...
But I don't know if there's a list. I mean, that's a good question for the Tree Board.
There is a, for the central city, there was a study of all the street trees, and that should be in the records. That was done, probably, I'm going to say 2014, '15, somewhere in there, the health and the type of tree, all in the central city, not the whole city.
But how do you designate a historical tree? Does that just mean it, you know, are we going to be segregationists and just say 200-year oaks are historical, or do we give?
I don't know how they become historical beyond the age and the type of tree, I'm going to guess, and you hit oak. And that's, you know, there are a couple that are on Milwaukee Street that I know are older than our country, and so they're looked after. And the other tree that you mentioned, your Chick-fil-A is also very old, so, but yeah, they are recognized and then designated as such, but I am unfamiliar with the exact process.
I'll bring it up at Tree Board in the near future.
Yeah, it's a good one.
I would have a second question related to that. I guess I needed just a little adoration for myself. In a separate section, it does talk about how a review of the trees on the property would have to be conducted first. Anything larger than four inches would be counted, anything less than four inches is not counted. So since we can only buy up to a four-inch tree for practical purposes, if someone was to cut down 50 trees on a couple acres that were only three inches, it would be as if there was no trees, correct?
When they're done, yeah. I mean, there's, so if it's not, if it's not four inches, it's not on the tree inventory that's conducted.
And Phil, just to help clarify, too, the only change of any significance here is dollar amount.
Right.
Everything else is existing.
Okay. Okay, so I guess that's a separate issue. Thank you.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. All right, we will move on to...
Well, we need our next...
You got one more.
Our next...
What number is that?
This is Section 8B2A.
It's combined into the same ordinance?
No, it's a different, it's a different ordinance.
Oh, I see.
So we also amended, it's just, we also made changes to our community-based residential facility ordinance in the, because of changes that the state made about four and a half years ago to how conditional uses are treated. If you don't have a real long, a litany of descriptive language, how a conditional use would be restricted for something like a 100-unit facility in a residential environment. Since we don't have anything written as far as that conditional use, someone could put 100-unit facility in a residential environment if they met all the building codes. And so what we did is we took residential out of our code for community-based residential facilities and left them in anywhere else. But you still, and we actually reference the state statute because it's, it is overseeing, there's oversight from the state on where you need to allow CBRFs, and so up to eight units can be allowed, have to be permitted in any residential zoning in the city. And so that's still in there. So we just reference the state statute when it comes to residential areas and everything else is in business. What is noted in there, though, is that, not in the ordinance change that we're talking about, we do note that there are likely areas that are zoned as multifamily where more than eight units would be appropriate, and we're going to follow up and work on what looks good for that. So you'll see this ordinance be amended again sometime in the next few months. We just are looking for other communities for examples of good ordinances and what would meet the city's goals as far as our master plan and all of that other stuff. Is there any other questions on the CBRF thing? All right, so Iker will make a motion to adopt the text amendments to Section 52-14228 regarding conditional uses for community-based residential facilities.
Grimmer, roll, second.
All righty, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes.
All right, and then our meeting is at the end of the month for our next meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to 8C, Lake Welfare Committee.
Covered at the last, covered at the last meeting, we've got one coming right up next week.
Okay. We'll move on to 8D, Park and Rec Commission and Tree Board, Mr. Grimmer.
Nothing from Tree Board. Park and Rec continues to work on their memorial dedication policy. That's a work in progress, and our 1227 meeting was canceled. No other report, Mr.'s questions.
Sounds good. All right, 8E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Barron.
No meeting.
No meeting. 8F, Delahart Commission, Mr. Iker.
Yes, we are reviewing, we're reviewing two proposals for a different plant upgrade, which has to do with trying to avoid the need for chemicals to meet all of the state and federal limits that we have to meet, even though our last upgrade got us, got us all the infrastructure necessary to do this. There's an additional project that needs to be completed. It's going to be around $3 million bucks. We have the money, but we're just looking for the right contractor, and we've got a proposal coming to us next week, and we're going to review them both and should have a decision on how we're going to handle that, so. Aside from that, Christmas party's coming up, and there's, oh, that's it.
We all calm down now?
Oh, my.
What do you think, Mike?
I think that was a first. Are we okay back there, Mike?
My mic is...
Whoever's got to transcribe this is going to get an airphone.
We can proceed, okay.
Are you still recording?
I don't know. Is our, yeah, my mic's...
I pity the person that has it in their ear when they're listening to the record. Give them a heads up, what time is it?
Yeah, I think my mic is still working.
7:21.
Hello.
Yeah, I would give them a heads up.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to 8G, Police Commission. Phil, I assume no report?
None. Correct.
Okay, Library Board, Ms. Valdi.
Ha, we met on November 16th. And just a couple of things to mention, Santa is visiting the library twice, once for Santa Storytime and then once for a drive-through Santa experience. Santa will be here next week on the 14th and 15th. A huge thank you to our friends at the Delafield Police Department for making this happen. I love that. Have any new tech on your wish list this year? You can come to a tech Q&amp;A session on the 17th, find out what you need to know before you make a purchase. Also, if you want to stay home, kind of night like this, you can try a new app that's, you can connect to through the library with your library card called Hoopla. And you just need a library card, and you can borrow books, movies, audiobooks, ebooks, comics, even TV shows. So kind of neat. And our next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 14th, at 6:30 on Zoom. There you go.
I attended the special meeting, not the meeting on the 16th, but can you touch base on the bylaws change?
It was really just to align it with a state thing, and I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to get too, it was more to just make sure everything was lined up as put as simply as possible, some, like, sort of what we do here all the time with our code maybe didn't tweak to align with another one and wanted to make sure that everything was, that we hadn't noticed, but I think Molly might have. That's all I got.
But the end result of the tweak was that, you know, a certain number of people were required to be on the library board and live in the City of Delafield, and the change reduced that by one person.
I don't think it did. I think it only aligned it. There is no change at all in terms of, our biggest challenge on the board, frankly, in the years I've been on it, is to get people who aren't in the city on the board. We obviously have neighbors and people in the city who are on the board routinely, and trying to find somebody who lives outside of the city has been the challenge. So it happened to come up because we, a few years ago, it's just, it's a long story. But looking at the number of members, obviously, you always want an odd number of members on a board. And a few years ago, we had two people volunteer, express interest in being on the board, and the library board was interested in both of them because they both had unique skillsets. And then we went to the county and talked about that. They were both from the city. And so our challenge has always been to find people who aren't. And it was from there that we've entered in more dialogue with, like, board numbers and people and what percentage, but it should not have changed the total number at all.
The number of people on the board required to live in the City of Delafield was reduced by one, so maybe...
Yeah, it's only, only if you had an expanded board, though, so you have to be careful with that statement. If you had seven members, no, it wouldn't have changed. Nine members, no, it wouldn't have changed. It might have changed with 11. So therein lies the rub. So it wasn't like a counterattack to covertly do something nefarious at all. It was more, we have more members because more people are interested in being on the board, and we have to strike that balance. But it wasn't really a net, it wasn't really reduced, it's because we have a bigger board than we used to have.
But the, the, the Delafield influence was diluted with this change. Is that what I'm, is that what's?
If you're, that's okay if you don't have the details, Jackie. Can you bring it, the next council meeting?
Sure, yeah. Had I known you were going to ask, I'd have brought it.
It's all fair.
Yeah, no, it's not a big secret, yeah, but no, let me, yeah, let me have a more educated, nuanced-
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I, Zoning Board of Appeals, Phil, I assume no meeting?
Correct.
J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron.
No meeting.
No meeting. Ripping right through here. Okay, K, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission. No meeting to my understanding. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
We had a meeting last Thursday. The board approved a down payment on the already budgeted for ladder truck. We moved ahead quickly on that because Pierce was planning a seven percent increase after January fifteenth. Yeah, on a one-point-one million dollar truck. It's quite the expense. And so, we moved forward and put that down payment on. And I think the, the discount we get for putting down ten percent is about two percent, two to two and a half percent off the total. So, they are moving, we're moving ahead with that. As far as budget items, I know there was some concern earlier that I brought up about meeting budget this year. Those concerns were misplaced. We should be over revenue by roughly three-hundred thousand and over our expense by two-hundred thousand roughly. And so, we'll end in the black this year. Give or take.
Always good news.
Always good news. Not to say that we're profitable, two-point-four million were contributions from municipalities, so saying that we're in the black is a little misleading, but for our budgeted purposes, yeah, good news.
Got it.
That's all for now. There were closed session issues, which I'll bring up when appropriate.
Sounds good. Thank you. Move on to M, Other Committees, Commissions and Boards. Your Management Committee, Ms. Henry.
We do not meet.
Not meet, okay. All right, Nothing Under Nine, Unfinished Business, then we have Mayor's Report. So, we have a sequence of appointments here. All but one are cleanups that the clerk identified from prior clerks that didn't document things probably as well as they should have been. And I asked to have this master list that the mayor uses to understand what positions are available, which ones are not. And in the process of going through that list to get it up to date, make sure we were accurate, the clerk found one, two, three, four, five different things that should have been voted on in the past that were not. So, during that cleanup process, he's now added them to the agenda. So, more or less, all these people have been serving in this capacity up to this point. Now, we're just documenting it appropriately. Any overall questions on that? Otherwise, I'm just going to go into them. So-
Could I make a grander motion to approve this slate of candidates under ten A?
Sure can.
That's my motion.
That's Matt, that's Matt and Aker will second.
Okay. I just had a little discussion. I just wanted to mention, let's see. Number two, Susan Buchanan to the Delahart Commission to succeed Kevin Maples. She is new. Some of you may or may not know her, but she is the director of Tall Pines. And I'm really glad she was able to step forward. She just recently moved into the city. And I think she'll add a really unique perspective to that group on environmental things that can be done to potentially grant and maybe offset some of these bigger cost portions of them down the road as they come, as the plant needs to upgrade. But she has past experience. She was on a planning commission before and she's been on various committees, I believe it was in Cedarburg where she moved from. So, I'm really excited to have her on there. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right, move on to New Business. Eleven A, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Ordinance Number Seven Eight Five and Ordinance to Repeal Section Two Point One Six Nine of the Delafield Municipal Code Related to the Municipal Board of Absentee Ballot Canvassers.
Jim Barron, I'll so move.
Okay.
Aker will second.
Okay.
So, what is it about?
So, my notes say Molly wanted to do this. This was an idea that Steve, the prior clerk, had to make this change to the code. And Molly has found that it actually is quite problematic in various scenarios. So, basically, it returns to the way the code read prior to Steve making the change. That's basically it. And there's information in your packet that has greater detail. There's a problem with the open records. Oh, that's it. The, the, the change Steve made, the way the open records rules work, that it's possible, not as a general rule, but it's possible under some scenarios that you, the city may have to release the information so that people could actually tell who you voted for. And that's a concern Molly said override, that overrides the benefit that Steve saw and she'd like it returned to the way it was so that that risk is not there.
Yeah, her memo makes sense.
It was also a matter of where they were counted, wasn't it?
Yeah, there was a number of details in there, yeah.
It's very detailed and it's, it's hard to, because what I'm afraid is what happens on occasion is that it'll come back and bite me, well, you voted to support it. Well, I didn't really even know what it was. So, I'm, I, I hesitate. The highlighted section, I'm assuming is the, the tweak. I mean, I'm just not sure. Where it says the board, absentee ballot canvassers shall mark the poll list number of each elector who casts an absentee ballot on the back of the electors' ballot. Is this to make sure it's, you know, kosher? I, I'm just having, I, you know, I mean, it's pretty thick.
Yeah, I would say if on any of these, since we don't have Tom or Molly here to speak to me, if there's any level of uncomfort, then we can just postpone and take care of it at the next meeting. So, if you're not comfortable, let's just-
I would draw my motion and ask that it be put back on the agenda next meeting.
Okay. And that would be for eleven A.
Thank you.
And the seconds are good with that?
I'm good with that, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to eleven B, Discussion and Action Regarding the Approval of the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Line of Credit Renewal. According to Tom, this is just housecleaning. This is something that we approve every year.
Jim Barron, so move.
Grimmer, second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. Eleven C, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding a Request from the American Legion to Install a Drive-Up Curbside Dropbox in the Western Island of the City Hall Parking Lot for the Proper Disposal of a Retired American Flag. Want to come on up?
Should I?
Yes, come on up and just speaking to the mic and if you can give us your name and address.
Frank Steffel, S nine, W three-one-seven-five-five, Glacier Pass, Delafield. I want to thank you for inviting me and having the, this on the agenda. I represent the American Delafield Legion, Post One-Ninety-Six. And I just want to give you a little history on the flag box that we'd like to place here. It was originally built by an Eagle Scout by the name of Noel Zenker. And it was placed at Sentry. And Sentry returned it back to our, our Legion post. And they didn't give a reason, they just brought it in one day and set it there. We also, we have presently another flag box, which is in the Legion. And so, we're looking for a home for this second box. We don't need obviously two flag boxes. So, some of the signs on the box are first Noel's name and his troop number. Second, there is a, a sign that says U.S. Flag Only. And we're going to add another one wherever we place this flag box that would state that any oversized flags should be brought directly to the Legion. The size is four feet by two feet by two and a, feet, three inches. We plan to obviously give a key to the people that will house the, the box and we would also have a key for the box. The plan is that we would take care of the maintenance and the inside cleaning and any flag removal and we would do that weekly. And I plan on doing that most of the time myself because I do come to the library quite a bit. So, it needs to be indoors. It can't be outside. It's an indoor box. So, that's pretty much it. We're looking for a place to place it. In the City Hall, you have a beautiful building here and we think that'd be an ideal place. And, you know, it's the library because the library, it's used a lot. So, the fact that we look at the box once, once a week and remove what's there, you know, if there's any candy wrappers or whatever books, we take care of that. So, I hope you'll consider this request. I do want to point out that it's Christmas and this box doesn't have a home, so it's kind of an orphaned.
The emotional pitch at the end.
So, I guess that's, do you have any questions?
Where does the, what site does the QR code on the side of it take you to? Is there a website that links to that?
On the picture.
There's a picture of it.
On the picture you've got.
The white-
So, you've got, it takes you someplace. I'm just curious.
It's a QR code, yeah.
Does it take you to the Legion site or like how to take care of a flag?
You know, I really don't know.
It'd be, just, I'll, when, when we see it in the lobby, hopefully, I'll just scan it.
You might be able to do it right now.
It goes to Sentry.
You might be able to do it with your phone right there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have-
No, no, no problem.
So, I, I, I know there was discussion about possibly putting the, the Lions box at, you know, whatever reason is temporarily not working out. But the idea for the inside location was that was right next to the elevator. So, I, I assume that between the, the library and City Hall, they, they agreed that would be a good place for the Lions thing, but since that's off the table for now, I would presume that Stephanie would most likely be okay with that location.
Well, it says they want the Western Island of the City Hall Parking Lot.
You know, I'm not quite sure how that all got in there, but you heard what the-
Yeah, but he was just saying he wants it inside, so, which I think is very sensible.
Yeah, I don't think it weathered very well.
And how frequently did, does it get checked? You say once a week?
I think we're going to come weekly.
Okay.
Most, most of the time I'd be here.
So, if a book ends up in there, you walk it across and like-
Yeah, that's why you don't want it on that side.
I think that might be me.
And you?
I'd make a key available.
Don't, you're not supposed to set that by the computer.
It's not.
Or your phone, I'm sorry. Your phone is there.
Phone's not near it.
I just lean forward.
Yeah.
But I'm going to just not move.
I do know, one thing that was brought up before was that the library would like a key just so they could, just have some concerns that, and I think over as time goes by, they just have concerns that somebody might put books in there.
I could see somebody who's a little kid, you know, a three-year-old helping mom and putting something in.
Periodically, would you have a problem sharing a key?
No, I, I plan to have a key made available for the city for emergency.
Perfect.
And I could make one for the library. Also, we could make one for the library.
Perfect.
Perfect.
You know, I, I mean, my concern is somebody, more than a book, throw a candy in there and, you know-
Right. Well, I could see little ones, you know, like if you've got three or four kids you're trying to schlep on and the little ones always dart off and do something.
Absolutely.
How many flags were collected at the Sentry?
You know, I'm, I'm relatively new. I do know that when they brought it back, there were six flags in the box.
And I can tell you at the Fourth of July event after the parade, they properly, maybe I'm missing the right word, but they properly retire the flags and then they go through a process of burning the flags and the pile is usually about yay tall with flags laying flat. So, it's, it's, I'm not sure how they get all the flags, but they, they accumulated quite a number of flags.
They get one or two a year from me.
Yeah, a lot of them are brought over to the Legion directly.
So, great. Does anybody have any other questions?
Jim Barron, I'll make a motion to approve the request to put the flag box in the inside lobby of the City Hall. Atrium of the City Hall.
Aker, seconds.
All right, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I do have, I do have a question. One of the concerns with the Lions was we request that it be, that on a, one year, if I remember correctly, one-year annual trial basis and that it might be rotated with other groups. Would that, is that a consideration, a concern? That was concerned with others. Is that a concern here?
Only out of fairness too, because that was, that I would say that we at least revisit it once a year just to see how it's going and talk about it, just because we said we would do that with the eyeglasses as well. I think that that should be included in any of these types of requests. Not that we would do it, but just that we would revisit it once a year.
I think fair is fair and, and yeah, I mean, once it's there and we figure out, maybe we tweak it, like we move it to another side or we move it up, you know, closer to the entryway and just, you know, I think it's not a bad idea to just manage it. Not like, you're on a trial, young man, you know, that's not at all. But it was one of the concerns expressed, so.
Yes, and there was also the concern for Phil's point that, okay, we allowed the Legion in and we allowed the Lions in. What about St. Joan of Arc? What about this organization or that organization? And now we've got a lobby full of drop boxes. So, I'm fine with reviewing it annually.
I think by just having it there, I mean, we reserve a right to do that anytime, right? I mean, we're going to remodel things or we're going to paint walls or we're going to, I don't know. I don't know that you need to formalize it with any kind of motion, it's-
I think the discussion here has already-
Yeah, I think so.
Validated that, yeah.
I, I think that's a good idea. We could, in a year, visit it. I mean, if there's a problem, I'm sure that, speaking for the Legion, we wouldn't want it here if we didn't want it here, so.
Okay. Does everybody understand where we're at? Because I want to call the question. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes.
Welcome.
Is there a, a time period that we're looking at or just one?
Bring it over as soon as you're ready.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thanks for all you do. Thanks for your service. Okay, eleven D, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Proposed Quantity Discount Pricing for the Sale of Old Street and Traffic Signs.
That was a fun dream.
Basically, we currently sell the signs for the last several years at fifteen dollars a sign. According to Tom, sales were somewhat brisk the first couple of years, but have really slowed down. And now there's an individual or two that would like to have a bulk price. And since they're really not selling anyhow, the idea was to put this in here so that you could get five for fifty dollars. So, the question is, would you guys be, would the council be willing to add five for fifty dollars to the current rules for selling the old street signs?
For the street signs, you mean the street name signs? Or the old, you're not talking about stop signs?
It says old street and traffic signs.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I think whatever we can get for them, we should get for them. Encourage them to turn into money, right?
Is that a motion?
I, this is Tim. I move to approve the proposal for a bulk price for our street signs.
Grimmer, seconds.
All right, is there any discussion?
Is this a price that was set previously by the council?
Fifteen dollars. Well, I, I don't know. I just know it was fifteen dollars. How we arrived at fifteen dollars, I, I'm not sure.
I bought, I bought an old stop sign because the one in my church's parking lot was all faded. I mean, there's opportunities to, to take advantage of it and people should do it.
Oh, certainly. And like you say, if they're just sitting there, you know, sell them. And I'm just kind of curious if that's something that we had previously set the price on. And I'm just kind of curious if that's something that we had previously set the price on and therefore only we can set this price because otherwise...
Wow. Nobody moved anything.
No, I don't, there's not a lot of deliberations. We're deliberating more now than we did.
Yeah.
Nobody has moved anything. It's just like random. We're all just sitting here.
To do whatever was needed.
Okay. All righty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, passes. Okay, we'll move on to 11E Approval Of Vouchers Payable. Probably have to skip that because we don't have the book you didn't sign, so we'll just, we'll skip that one. We'll do a double deal next time. All right, Reporter City Officials, City Administrator, nothing. That's a convenient. City Clerk. Candidate C Paperwork Now Available Online. URL is listed here on the agenda. Item 2, Updated Ward And Automatic District Maps Are On The City Website And Information Is Uploaded Into My Vote. And the third thing she wanted to mention was the Christmas Clearing Council Toy Collection Bin is now in the City Hall Lobby. Okay. We'll move on to City Treasurer's Report, October 2021 Treasurer's Report. That's in the packet.
You need a motion?
Hmm, I don't recall. Think so.
No.
Anybody remember different?
I don't think we do.
No.
Okay. Item D, Council Request For Future Agenda Items. Don't have any tonight. Just reach out to me or the clerk or the city administrator and if something comes up. All right, 13 Correspondence. I'll refer to you what's in the packet. And then matter for possible closed session. So obviously, this is up to the council, but my preference would be that since Tom is not here, able to have a two-way conversation and there's no rush to get this done, whatever action we took could certainly be retroactive at the first of the year. I'd much rather have him be here for this than us to, you know, have to do it without him. So I would just presume we postpone this and bring it up either in January, I mean, if they had to, February, the next convenient time to get it on the agenda.
I'd agree.
Agree.
Yeah, makes sense.
Makes sense.
So if somebody wants to make a motion, motion to postpone this item to future date...
I'll make a motion to postpone 14A, B, and C into the year 2022, January or February.
Sounds good.
Uh, Grimmer, second.
It was Jim Barron making the motion.
All righty, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Passes. Okay. We are on to number 15, Seeing No Further Business. We are now adjourned at 7:49.